Rob, do you have four copies that we can keep? And the, uh, and the, uh, what is it, about the former?
Form A.
I have a, let's see, we have Form A.
Very good. If you give back to Mrs. and Mrs. DeSara. And with that, there's a check or whatever goes with that.
I do have a check. I will fill it out with some of the amount.
We keep four copies.
Okay.
And you get the A and R back or whatever other copies here.
Yep. I have five, so we have one for the owner.
Very good.
So, what we have here is a lot on Sardi Road that was initially divided back in the eighties into three lots.
Now, that's already a lot that's already registered with the.
It was already recorded.
Okay.
It was held in common ownership by the same person. And as you know, since the eighties, they've changed the zoning.
Yep.
So what we have here is to confirm the lot as it was described back in the old survey, which we did.
Okay.
And re-divided it with 150 feet of frontage instead of 100. And what they wanted to do is come out to 150, but then immediately back close to the line and then back along the original lot lines. So each lot has the 150 feet of frontage and the proper area. And we have the house lot, which includes the driveway. And we also have this parcel one, which is a, at this point, a non-buildable lot. He's in negotiations with the abutter Sears, who also has a non-buildable lot. And they're in a negotiation to purchase it and combine it. And if that sale happens, then they're going to combine this for a legal lot. If it doesn't, he's going to eat it back to the house lot. There's no point in keeping that. So we have it labeled as a non-buildable lot at this point.
Which it is.
Which it is.
Which you're presenting tonight. So parcel number one is non-buildable at this time.
Non-buildable and.
It has no bearing on the sale that happens down the road.
If it happens, it happens. If not, he's just going to give it to the house lot because it's a used.
Okay, so lot number two is existing right there with the house and the driveway, correct?
Yep, house and driveway. And we have 154 feet of frontage.
Very good.
There. And then lots three and four are the new lots with 150, even though it kind of drubs back and then goes along those original lines. And we have a blow up on the side here as to how that is going to happen. Comes back and then back to the old lot line. And.
That's the lower easement detail. The lower left-hand side will show you where the roof is down and comes back.
You have these little easements whereas, you know, lot three will obviously have ownership of that little sliver, but lot two, the house lot, has the right to use that land to, you know, get in. They wanted to keep the, that little roundup with the driveway together.
Thank you. Ed, just a second.
City Road.
Peter, is that Sardi Road?
Is that a city road?
I believe it is. Isn't it that? Sardi?
That wouldn't affect.
No.
I'm just, it has not, my question is, if they do an attempt to build a lot, just a lot of mall, that it is a city road.
That'll all be put in?
That would be known.
Right. That will be, that would be known and, you know, any.
The building permit would have to address that.
Right. Jack will have that on there and any stipulations.
I was just wondering.
It's not.
It's not? Okay.
Not a lot.
So it's not an issue.
Oh, Sardi Road, Sardi Road, yes, yes. I'm sorry. Sardi Road is. But that's right on your driveway application too.
Yeah, that would be for the driveway, the cut through, through the stone wall.
Right, that's all, just.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'll make sure, I'll give John a heads up on that.
People take all the rocks out and.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
We'll, uh, we'll give John a heads up on as far as when he goes to develop the lot. So he needs to be aware of the scene of road and minimize your cut through the wall.
Peter, you're looking at it. Any questions?
No, I, it meets the requirement. I mean, what else can this way do, right?
No, no, no. Again, again, you know, the way it's been cut up and you get the little jog that comes back. You all understand that, Melissa? Peter?
Yeah.
Ed? You all set?
Yep.
Okay, Sue. All right. Becky, any questions, any concerns, anything you wish to say?
My idea.
Yeah. Make sure, make better.
Right over here.
Yeah. Before the motion, make sure you get that check in hand, all right? That's the biggest thing. Get that out.
Yeah, I actually do have a second Form A.
Oh, that, perfect. Okay, I was.
Do I need to fill it out though?
Jack, could you have the pen?
I have it.
I can, I can make him copy this one.
Okay.
As long as I have it.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the A and R as presented by Robert Floyd, Black Floyd, for the 201 siding road?
I made the motion that we accept the A and R for 201 siding.
Motion made second.
Second.
All right, all right. No questions from anybody, all right? Everybody understands it's plain written the way the lot's being broken down, okay? The square footage and the frontage is all there? No questions on that? All right. Here are no questions. All in favor.
All right.
All right, let's start from the right. Just sign it, uh. It says approval of the board. It's in between here, all right? Today's date is the 4th.
Yeah. It's got a lot, and you don't do a lot out here. These roads.
I see Grove Street, you know, where he's.
Very well. I did a lot of work on it.
Yeah, we did, took a lot of work on it.
And it's our, our main, uh, they do engineering, uh, surveying.
Yeah, yeah.
Engineering, survival, and rising.
Jeff and the.
Jeff Wall, yeah, yep.
It's just great to call, if I have to give him, you know, a warning. He calls for it.
Mr. Para.
Oh, yeah.
Finally. So, uh, we've got a few robbed out this way. See you again.
Yeah, that, that was a shame.
Yeah, I just went to a planning board meeting in North Brookfield. Saw him two minutes ago. Come across him every now and again. Have to look. Yeah, he's registered. I don't know what's going on there because his brother, you know, off the south porch. I guess they don't talk or stranger or something.
I don't think this one's smart because it's pen.
Was that?
Anything else might done this.
Yeah. That pen, that's the pen we use.
Right. I'm saying, I don't think this one, the style they changed after a couple of years.
No, this one? I don't think so. The other one, remember?
The other one used to, it was more sharp.
Yeah.
It was a. Yes, but it was, but it wasn't real. The yellow one was just a smart, pretty easy. Couldn't touch it two minutes after.
We'll take before you get the one and you get that, right?
And the one of my head.
Okay, yep.
You get the four and the check.
Okay, right. Peter will take that back if those are rough.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Again, uh.
I don't want to hear it afterwards. Sue was right.
All right, just, we'll pull that to the outside. That'll keep us alive.
I've had a few at the registry of D's where they're like, I can't tell who that signature is. And they look around and I'm like, I've never seen it before.
Yeah.
Happens.
These guys. Can you, Dex, got your other one?
I'm only going to three papers.
Okay.
Don't we need four? Jack doesn't want them anymore.
It's up to Jack. We used to have four.
He wants the recorder for him, so if he doesn't, he'll sign all day. No, unless he record it.
Now we go, so, up to Jack, Jack. Final project space is getting snapped.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you. Good luck to John and Cassie too with it.
Will do. Thanks.
Yep.
Is Joe, does he's related to Joe?
Joe is John's brother.
Brother, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Mill Estate, right around the corner.
John is the Post Road Realty right in Westbrook Field.
Right on the corner with his wife, Cassie.
Cassie, yeah, that's his wife.
They took the old Maltons place.
Okay.
Correct?
Right, yeah, right.
Maltin Sherin used to be right there.
I believe so, right next to the auto body place there.
Yeah, then they bought, then they bought it and put the, that's the office right now.
Okay, yeah, Don Para referred me to him to give an appraisal of it.
Yeah, yeah, John. He, Joe, John used to use Don.
That's why. When you said that, I said I didn't connect the two.
Yeah, that's it. Fair enough.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for having me. Have a great night.
You too.
All right, what's coming up at 6:30?
Right now, I have.
Stand by one. I'm ahead of myself. Michael, Ms. Burrell, would you shut that off right now? To the green place, thank you.
That's what you want, sure.
Thanks.
No problem.
And I'd like to open the public hearing at this time at 6:30 for Wanda Kobowski. Just Kobowski here. Thank you very much, ma'am. How are you today? Thanks for getting here. All right, Ms. Kobowski, everybody has a copy of the plans here. Can you just, just in detail slightly, you don't have to go into complete conversation if you don't wish to, just explain what's been going on and what you'd like to do.
Um, well, the original house that was there was the last homestead of the Reeds. And I wanted to, you know, you know, do it over, but I had four post and beam men come in and said it was too compromised and had to be demolished. So then I had to get another plan. And with that, I had to move the property back. So I had it surveyed because it was too close to the road. So I had to move it back and come up with a new plan.
So it's, the way it's presented on tonight's plan here by Roger Woods, that's where it's going to be positioned on the lot. Is that correct?
Correct.
This plan is final as the drawing stands?
Correct.
Melissa?
This is Fender's old place.
Yes. Everybody, uh, everybody understand where it is? It's on Reed Street. And it's, um.
Why does it need a special permit if they moved it back?
It only has 43,000 square.
If you look at the lot size, you need 45 overall, folks. That's why I said we throw the 1.5, okay? There's no real big things changing here. They're moving it back from the road because it was too close. What do they have for frontage? Take a look at frontage. The only thing is it's.
30,000.
2,000 feet, is it? 45? They need 45.
It's got 207 frontage, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's just, it's short square area.
Everybody understand why they need the 4,500, uh, the, uh, 4,500?
40,000.
45,000, I'm sorry, looking at the, 45,000 square foot. That's the lot size in the area that the house is. That the, that the home is based on our layout in town and lot sizes. This lot is what we call non-conforming. It doesn't meet the 45,000 square foot. The individual has a right to petition once denied by the, um, building inspector. Mr. Keough, Keough, once he reviews the plan. The lot now with the, the existing lot was and is existing to date at 43,483. 43,483. It's about 1,600 square feet less than the actual size needed. So the individual has a right to petition to the planning board. The planning board looks at the non-conformancy, conformity, and then looks at how the house is being or the property is being set up the way the house is being moved back and where it's going to be developed. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant or comments to be made, please? Peter?
Not, it just, it's just a shame, it's just short to come that close to require this kind of, this is something that we're going to look into probably on rezoning setbacks and square footage.
Just in the village.
One.
Yeah, not going to affect out there.
Yeah, but she stayed on the same footprint with that.
We'll take that note.
Still non-conforming.
It's still non-conforming, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, still non-conforming. So that's, that's one thing there.
That's right.
This is all.
Yeah.
Peter?
No, I'm lost.
Any thoughts about the way it's set up or anything else? Sue?
No, it looks like they're using the same, pretty much the same area.
It's just, how far back on the road did you go? Did you move it back?
Uh, 30 feet.
I'm sorry?
30 feet.
Uh, okay, 30 feet.
Former houses.
To give you the frontage. Any questions?
Yeah, because the front, this former one is the dotted line.
Right. The 30-foot shutback, that's the dotted line going around all the way through?
Right here. This one, just that one.
Right, yeah. Any questions for anybody here in the audience or presence this evening? Based on, would anybody like to take a look at the map and see how the house is being set back? We have one right here. Everybody wants to show any, take a look and see where we stand there. Take a look at all the paperwork brought in. Mr. Keough is on. By the bylaw, 1.5, 1.51, that's where we stand here with the non-conforming buildings, structures and uses. An individual does have a situation such as this, we refer right back to, right back to it and have to look at it. Non-conforming single and two-family residential structures. That's under 1.51. And with the thought and way the bylaw is written, each one of us has the opportunity to take a look at everything right here and see if it has a substantial impact on abutters or anybody showing concerns. Anybody who would have a concern, a neighbor or a person living across the street or a person within town who wants and wonder why, what's, and what's going on, showing concerns, references, it's a public meeting. They have the right to be here. They have the right to speak out. We have the right to listen to everybody here. We want people to speak out so that we can work with people. And I don't have anybody here this evening that is against it that we see or have heard from yet. And we've been going on with it. So with the board, where does the board, which way does the board wish to go now?
I'd say it's fine.
Sue, with that comment, Sue, do you have any problems with it the way it's done? Other than the non-conforming, based on the lot size, parkage 1,600 feet, rounding it off. We'll say 16. I'm a little high. The way it's set up, the way it's set in the property in the middle of the lot, it's not impacting anything. It's moved back from the street. The way the old house used to be closer to the road. It has the driveway extension. It's showing the, um, parking location of a former house where it was and it's just been moved around. It's not in any way impacting left, right, front or rear of anything. Behind you is all woods, yeah?
Yes.
Yep.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Melissa.
It looks to me like it's going to be as close to the street as it was before.
No.
This front here?
No, the second dotted line back there?
Yeah.
That's where the old one was. So they moved it.
But the post-single family has to move the same.
Distance from the.
The same distance, so it's as close to the street as the old one?
But they, they just make it 32 feet.
Reference to other, within, it's 33 feet.
Yep.
Is it possible to purchase behind it to give it 45,000?
But wasn't an option for them at this point.
Okay.
Understood that? And that's fine for an answer? Okay, Peter?
I'm good.
The property owners are aware that when they go to do the foundation and as built, it's going to be required on the foundation to make sure it's not in violation.
The property owners are aware. It's been noted that way? Okay.
But that's a building department.
Right, that, that's nothing, but it's still, they've been notified. You shaking your head yes and no, Peter? Go ahead.
I'm, I'm.
Do you have any problems with it?
I have no problems with it. I think it's the best way to utilize the property.
And to keep the, and to put a house there that a family who's been living there has, can.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, unfortunately, um, bylaws have been written. In those days, people built and they built to stay. It's unfortunate the house couldn't have been refurbished as old as it is.
Somebody went in there and they tried to make it a two-family.
Yeah.
And they just compromised it and then the weather and everything, it ruined it.
Well, it did, yet you'll have a better facility now than, than that. All right, Ed, anything?
I don't have anything. It's, um, I mean, it's just a hair under. It's a residential area. It's going to fit in.
Okay, so is the consensus opinion of the board that, based on what's been presented tonight by the family and the representative here and the plans, that. I'm sorry?
It just blows. It just blows. If there's no more information.
Yeah, only system getting there. There's no more, the information's been supplied than everything else. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make the motion to close the public hearing for special permit and a piece of paper.
Back, any questions? Any other? Seconded?
Cut and drawn.
All in favor?
All in.
All right. Very good. All set?
Thank you so much.
So within 90 days, the board will make a decision and we'll just file it to town clerk. We've got a copy, 20 days, there's a 20-day appeal period where anybody can appeal the decision, but I think I would have that with you already. So we'll send you something in writing.
Okay. When do you anticipate starting?
Soon as I can.
Very good. Very good. And we'll take that well into consideration, okay?
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you for attending. Careful going home. All righty, Michael, if you would. Thank you. He's here as a selectman.
Yes.
And he's going to presenting facts about property on 135 Primm Field Road. Here we go.
Okay, um, well, thanks for having me tonight. I wanted to come forward to board just to discuss the possibility of what has transpired. Mr. Fountain came into our, into one of our meetings and asked the board if we would consider by purchasing, purchasing a portion of the land that he owns over near or on 135 Primm Field Road. So at that point in time, the board decided to have a meeting and meet Mr. Fountain up at the property. We met on the 17th of January. I was myself and the last who were present toured the property with Mr. Fountain, went over some of the acreage, walked around and looked at the possibility. And this was strictly for the purpose of trying to maybe look at the possibility of a fire, police complex there. A while back, the town had purchased some land for the highway barn. There's also a lot, I think it's 14, to the north side of the highway barn that the town owns property. They own some property already to the south side of the highway barn. There's been concerns about the cemetery, um, filling up and needing space for the cemetery down the road. So we thought it would be nice to go out there, look at the property, see what Mr. Fountain was offering the town and try and get an idea if we were to purchase a piece of land, what we could do with it, what we legally can do with it, or how we could develop it if we were to down the road before he decides to possibly develop the whole property as residential use. Mr. Fountain had it marked off in the road, right near the driveway at 135, a marker to try and mark where the 150-foot mark would be because he's trying to maintain 150 foot, 150 feet of footage to potentially put a road in to come back to develop behind, going up towards the side, on the side. So we walked it, we looked at it. It's kind of narrow, in our opinion, but we were thinking possibly maybe going, if we were to develop it down the road, police in front, fire in the backside, possibly. Then today, when I was looking at the, the map, I was wondering why or what we could do with lot 14, if we could even use that lot. I'd heard some things that we couldn't. There was some issues and I'm not really up to speed on all of that. But the purpose of the town purchasing that land initially was just to build a complex down the road. So before he develops everything, if there's the option of possibly purchasing a portion of the land for further development, where the board is interested in pursuing that and maybe bringing it forward to town. So I wanted to come here tonight to see if it's possible. I had done some drawings and that square or the triangle that I have there roughly represents about six to seven acres of land that we would have to look at purchasing possibly. And I don't know how much space. David had mentioned possibly looking at maybe an acre and a half or so for the fire, maybe about three acres or two for the police, maybe about three acres of land with the structure and parking for fire. So I'm new to this and I'm here for you to see what the requirements are and what does the board think of this? And if the property is priced right, should we be pursuing this to gain access to it and inhabit so that if we do want to further develop it? That's kind of why I'm here tonight.
Well, it's good to see that the town's going to try to purchase some property.
I think, I think we're.
I think a good idea to purchase it.
We're extremely interested in purchasing the property. It may not be development right away, but we've been speaking to Pat Smalling. There's some options out there for us to develop. There's, there's monies there for new, not for existing and adding on. That's, that's the deal. So we have to make a decision. You know, we tossed around the idea of maybe trying to renovate Fire Station B and move an atom out and adding that to Fire Station A, which is just not enough space next to the river. Putting anything up here, we're really, you know, it's tight. And now people are, you know, well, if we vacate those buildings, what are we going to do with them? Personally, my thought process on Fire Station A was to take it down and maybe turn it into a parklot and grassy hole next to the river. Have some parking for the new downtown project when it, when it comes about. You know, it doesn't have to be a filled building. We have a lot of empty buildings, but we could utilize the space for, there are plans for space. But, um, my personal opinion is, is I would like to see the complex. I would like to see us at least try to acquire the lands we have if we want to.
How much of the land?
We don't know. Well, this is why I'm here tonight. I want to make sure that I'm looking at a parcel of land that I should be considering six to seven acres or should I consider enlarging that based on what, if we try to put two structures there or possibly three with maybe two for the fire.
Are you going to end up with issues with the water?
Well, it's its own two area. Definitely your building standards, you're definitely very tough.
The wealth.
Peter, based on, based on when you were on the committee with the highway department, correct?
Yeah.
They, we. Explain, explain the process that went on, even though this is to the right of it as we're looking at.
Basically, when you look at the highway department outside, originally, when they did the orders and conditions, nothing was supposed to be stored outside. Nothing. Look at it now. That's right. The reason why? Nothing was supposed to be stored outside. We have a, a, a type of aquifer that has, it's called unconfined aquifer, where you pour something on the ground, within a few hours, it's going into your water supply. That's where the highway barn is. So if they have a spill there, where are you going to get the water for the high school? That's my question. But you're going to be building in the same area right there. So you're under the same type of restrictions that they, they basically were supposed to be upheld to, but they're not. So this, but see, the state, the DEP will oversee whatever you guys build there also along with. But they were different because that park was rezoned, taken out of the, um, water protection area.
It was?
It was. You look at the maps, that, there's a strip right there where the highway barn is, which was taken out of it. They determined that that wasn't, didn't need to be protected. All the area around it is protected. So look at the maps. The water pump should have been taken out of it.
Yet, based on that, Peter, now this is a, three buildings are put in.
Right.
In the new area. Then you have the highway garage and the salt mine. Those aren't set in stone.
No.
Those are just projected on a lot size. So with that, based on everything that's happened before, the wells and the. So with that, based on everything that's happened before, the wells and the protected area, if anything is put in front of or along the back corner of the barn, the highway garage, not the salt shed, and everything is to the front, you're limited, your spatial, spatial area, yet you can still get buildings in there too, wouldn't you be able to?
You would have to redo our groundwater protection bylaw to, to change that. I mean, I, I don't know how it was exactly. I have it written down at home, the property and bylaw. But like I said, the area where the highway barn was taken out of it was still heavily restricted.
So when we purchased that land, when the town purchased that land, did they purchase both, all, both those parcels, fourteen, I think, and fifteen? Was it all purchased at the same time?
No, I don't think so.
Or it's separate?
I don't remember.
Fourteen's pretty big too.
Fourteen is the...
Fourteen's pretty big too. Are you thinking just...
No, I, well, I wasn't looking at that, because we're talking about the cemetery also.
Right.
That connects right to the back. That would be an easier connection for the cemetery to expand, rather than trying to go behind the highway or coming over to the purchase of the new land. So, we were looking at trying to leave that alone for cemetery purposes.
I, I just think it's gonna be very, with our existing laws that we have right now, it's just like, it cost an extra half a million to build a highway barn where it is. They could have built it anywhere else, but it cost them five hundred thousand bucks.
So when they did that, though, I mean, with that whole process of wanting a complex back then?
Right.
You know, I mean, we've thrown money at it already. Should we just leave it as is and...
My opinion, we paid it half a million more, we did, to build there versus anywhere else in town. And if you want to build on this other area, unless you change the zoning, it's still gonna cost you more. Even at the bottom of the scale, you're probably, you'd be looking at a million dollars more to build those kind of buildings on that lot.
Is the groundwater protection?
Yes.
It circles that. Those circles...
The whole area is in circle.
Do we have...
Is that it?
Yeah. There's Warren and West Warren. There's both there.
Yeah. You've seen that. Well, listen, you got it right there?
Not one.
Let, let Tyler just see. That, that shows, the encompassing radius of the circles show how water protection...
It's one thing to remove gravel. It's another thing to build. Jimmy had to go through a lot to, just to build his highway, his garage.
Yes.
You, you look at what he had to go through to do that.
It's not...
I think the protect is a great idea, but it's always usually in the water. West Warren was salt, so...
That's gonna be the town water council.
It's not...
They should have put him in the building across the street.
The Tivos?
No.
No.
Across the street from the town.
The electrical shop.
Oh.
Now, that's...
So the town bought it and they leave the lights on all night.
That can go on forever, but with this, one question that was asked. Is the board in favor of looking at a complex and trying to develop a complex within town? Fire and police, one. That's, that's a question, yes or no? No matter where it is.
Wicked expensive, last time we tried it.
Well, I'll tell you, I heard through the grapevine that Ed Spencer's place is called, whether it's true or not, I heard that that place was gonna be up eventually. And it was recently I heard that. So, I don't know how much truth was in it, but that's what, I'm just saying that...
I know the concern with the residents wanting things on Main Street, but it's so hard to find land.
Well, there was a piece going, right past Spencer's, going, going to Westbrookville, on the left-hand side, on the side of the hill that was protected. There's a pond, a little pond down in the valley. There was two houses there before. And I said something to Dave, I said, "We looked at that parcel when you were gonna build the highway barn." I said, "You cut a hole through the fence, you rezone that area, and you build it on the side of the hill," like they did in Leicester.
And this is another reason why I'm here tonight, is to find these things out, because we're looking at acquiring land. I, I don't want to sit here for three years in this office and not look to do something with either land that we do own, or where do we want to go with this?
We own that piece already.
And how many acres is that?
I'm not, I think it was like three or four acres. It's...
Is that the one behind, like, berries?
It, it's right before. It, there's, it's across from, um...
Is that conservation land?
It was, part of it was.
Further down is conservation land, the signs say. Just before the conservation sign. The last house on the left, the last house on the left, a little white ranch in the tree line, and then that area down in there, down to the pond and conservation.
It's quite a waste of water, actually.
There is, let's get back to this, though, here. There is land the town is interested. The question is, is the board in favor of the town looking for classes of land to build a complex? Yes or no? Does the board feel that the town is...
I would do that.
It's the zone. No, not, not where, we're not taking the property yet. So the board is agreeing that we should start looking for a complex to build.
Well, that's up to, actually, it's...
Well, it goes to the residents, but we, we just want to know.
We're, we're in favor. The board, they could say the planning board is in favor of looking for property to build.
Even if it's not stuff that we, something we presently own and we can research that, you know, we just wanted to make sure that we were meeting Mr. Fountain in a timely manner and giving him, you know, the courtesy of at least visiting it and seeing it, because he's anxious to do something this spring. So we want to give him a commitment if we are interested in purchasing.
So, hold on, Peter. I know, I think I know where you're going. I'd like to get this up. So with that, is there any member of the board here tonight that can help direct the selectmen in what to prepare and look at, or to, to review, based on what went on with the town highway garage, and what to expect, and have questions to ask Mr. Fountain based on what we know? The property right now is within the water protection area.
Right.
Right? We have maps. There are maps for that, okay? With that, that opens the door to some questions that would have to be asked prior to meeting and sitting down and bargaining clamshells and bear claws for, for property. Okay? Then with that, Peter, having said on the board or, or the committee, you might be able to enlighten Dario and the selectmen, or Dario, where to go with something else based on that? Because they can't walk in and say, "Yes, we're gonna buy it." The town says, "Yeah, we're gonna buy it." We buy it, and then we can't do anything with it.
Well, I think it should be...
So let's, let's give them a direction. Let's give them a direction, sue her, and give them a direction that we have, okay? So go ahead.
I say let Pete go and...
My opinion, I would look into it to see what would cost, I think it's gonna be, cost you, normally, at least twenty percent, twenty-five percent more compared to anywhere else in town to build it. That's my opinion on that, at least, at, at minimum. So, that's one of the factors I've been looking at. And to rezone it, I'm not sure if you can, if it's that easy. That zone, that water protected area, it, it, they had to jump through some hoops to get that, to encompass that area when they did it. And at the same time, they took that parcel out when they did that mapping. So, could it be taken, this part be taken out? I'm not sure. Probably can, but...
It looks likely to come in.
There's still, there's still a lot of restrictions on that area. You have to go through it. So, but if the price is right for that piece, whether you build on it or not, the town should probably...
That's the thing. We're still looking to purchase it.
That's, I think that's a great idea, protect it, at least from other contractors.
It could be used for something else down the road by the town.
It can do. I mean, we all land around there, so...
Nice park.
Pete, who knows? Yet, with that, where, I'm sure, they probably know. Where is the paperwork for highway garage? That has a lot of information.
Conservation would have a lot of that. Conservation have public hearings on that, multiple. And their orders and conditions on the existing on the highway barn for that one particular area. But the other places go is the water district, the Warren Water District. And, um, look at their maps.
Okay. Dave Johnson...
The water district is the one that championed groundwater protection.
Right, they did. Remember when Cliffy came in?
Yep.
Oh, boy, those were some neat ones, those ones.
So, I mean, those...
Contact Dave. Should be my next step, contact Dave.
Dave Johnson. Dave's gonna have everything.
Should I contact Conservation too?
Yeah, Carol will have everything based on that.
And look, look at the old orders and conditions. And they were supposed to hang a report in every year on, on the cleaning of the site. Have you seen one in the town report? Right, I'm just saying. That was part of the orders and conditions. Nothing was supposed to be stored outside. I, I mean, I drove by the place and said, like the, the DEP told me, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen.
So, it was my first step to come here. David couldn't make it tonight, but I wanted to see what the planning board thought before I started reaching out to everybody else and, and seeing, you know, what their thoughts are. I mean, we're, we're realistically looking at building new. It's just the monies are there for new. But when they come and call in, I want to be able to maximize.
Back to one of his questions, though. I mean, I understand cost, you know, no one wants to spend the money that we don't have. But, um, is this, he had the question of is it, if it's enough area for the two, three buildings? You know, like, I'm sure you want to also know that, you know, to go back to...
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. I mean, we know what Bruce is saying he needs for square footage for the amount of officers he's had, but we don't want to build a building built to suit for now. We want to make sure that we can fill it and, and have enough space as the town grows. So we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs and we can, you know, have plenty of space down the road.
What did Ware pay for their complex?
So it was federal, well, that was a lot of those federal money.
Yeah.
They had a huge, huge federal grant of that. That was a rare opportunity for them. That's not gonna come along, but they're, you know, in speaking with Todd, there's other monies that are coming down the road that...
A lot, because our taxes are already...
Well, I want the monies that are gonna help build. I mean, so it's a minimal impact to the residents, you know, that factor. But we, you know, obviously, there's gonna be some portion that we're gonna have to put in, but, you know, financially, we're in good shape. And, and I'm not saying I want to spend a ton of money, but sometimes you gotta spend a little money to encourage growth and, and, and to make changes that are necessary to make, to move the town in the next direction.
Based on comments made by CMR, PC, and UMass last meeting, within the next ten years, is that correct?
Yeah, there's gonna be a boom.
Within the next ten years, they're saying you were here for that. You probably don't...
That'd be part of the size of the building we're building.
Is gonna expand. And Warren is one of the towns people are looking at.
Yeah, as I said, it, all the other towns that have reached our level do go for it. I mean, that's all there is to it.
So, so planning ahead and buying a piece of property?
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with that.
No, there isn't. I think it's a great idea.
The town can decide what to do with it.
Right.
And then the other thing, I don't know, this is just my feeling, and everybody has one or has a comment. Sometimes having a complex, ETW Highway, whatever you wish to call it, police, fire, and everything, set back out of the side, out of town, is more advantage to the town. It's a response right down the road. It can get any place there. It's not gonna eliminate anything, yet it's set aside where it's not an eyesore and it's always combobulated. The center of town, fire trucks going back and forth, ambulances, they can get there and move. And the complex, the lands are there today. The centers of towns don't have land. And they're all held by anything that DEP and everybody else can say. Being able to move out and work with DEP and work with the townspeople, you can have a beautiful complex and other additives to that property too for the townspeople. So that's the thing to look at. Well, yeah, not even. So with that, I think there's direction made.
So, I, my only other question is, and I'm not sure where you see those little drawings that I have on there. My concern is, is where he hasn't marked up and the width of the frontage there and putting the building behind the other. How, how much space do I need to get fire out? Let's say fire is behind police.
You'd have to talk to Adam.
Am I, am I wrong in saying that we own this?
Yes.
The highway department?
Yes.
Right? And you're gonna buy that. Well, if you put a bill in there, you can put a road right down through the highway department.
Well, I, I know, I'm just, I'm just sure...
Until, until there is a, you've got access to Brimfield Road in many different ways. Look at it. Depending on Adam and the chief, how they want to build his position.
Right.
And how Adam wants his ambulance to go out the side door and the fire trucks come out the front. So I don't think that...
We do there.
I'm sorry?
Could make it go in and out.
Exactly. You can have a road reviving there. I mean, a circle in the Sallyport close. So there really isn't anything that we...
I think space-wise is fine. It's just whether the water.
Yeah, there's more space there.
That's a recharge there.
Right under the underpass.
Yeah. Right there in that corner.
You know on the corner when you go under the underpass and you go this way, where that sign says Welcome to Warren? That was gonna be the new police.
That was one of the mid-area projected.
That's the color part.
Yeah.
Not even cutting.
But with that...
But, you know, I don't like to, you know, beat a dead horse and talk about it forever. I just want to, you know, see what your, your board feels. And, and, and I want to give Mr. Fountain the opportunity to say, "Hey, we're looking at six, seven acres. What's the price?" Cut and dry, you know?
I think the biggest thing is having your support and you people having people's support if it comes to a change in the bylaws.
Right.
Because as you know, when it stands on the town floor and you want a bylaw change, well, who we favoring and who's involved and why, okay? That's gonna be the biggest issue.
Well, this is why part of stuff that I announced earlier this year is I am hoping to have more informational meetings prior to those town meetings.
Yeah.
Get it out now. You know, air your grievances or whatever concerns you may have right here, right now. Let's not always argue on the floor.
That's weird that people don't come to the meetings. They wait to the floor.
Correct. You've got less than ninety days, right? February fourth. May is the town meeting. If that's when you're going, we're working on bylaws too, but how do you do it? You just gotta have your ducks in order and keep going. And I think this would be great.
I think definitely the purchases, I think it's a good idea, but whether it's feasible...
What the use is, and Pete ran correctly.
Though, whether it's practical or be feasible. At one time, they wanted to buy all this, the town, and protect it. That was out there for years.
And so did David throw out, throw it out there about protecting that all that.
Well, it was. Just before he got, was on as a selectman for a number of years, West Warren Water District wanted to protect it, because we went ten years without water in West Warren because of that contamination. Now, those are the new wells for West Warren right next to it.
From the turnpike.
You couldn't drink it. So, people in West Warren, unless you lived here a few years ago and you, you had salt water coming out of the town, that was the...
That water wasn't even good for the, oh, of course. We were gonna try and buy the well and it wouldn't even...
So I'm just, that's why it's a sticky point with some, the older people, remember what happened there.
Oh, yes.
Yet with buying it...
I covered that.
Even with today's restrictions and green everything, if it's done right, you can buy it and protect it at the same time with today's green laws and everything else. So there are ways to, to work hand in hand with everything.
It's amazing. You saw where they just put the new West Brimfield High School, the swamp lands. It was, they couldn't even play sports back there when the, what the old building was. It was so wet, soccer fields.
A high school was that wet? It was built on a swamp and a dump, so...
Yeah, it is amazing.
So was the elementary school.
Right, yeah. It was filled in the swamp.
History of building on a swamp, it's just the past.
So with that, I think they've got direction, and anything else we can do and help with it, we'll hang on to this, but anything else we can do?
I'll make contact with Dave.
I have that much information.
He does too.
We can get a footnote.
I have a lot.
I'm sure you do. I will tap into that. So is it, if we wanted to, or have you come into one of our meetings, or, or come to have a working meeting, to pick your brain and gather information?
What was the town committee back then?
Well, it wasn't really a committee. It was part of the taxpayers group that I, that I had for a number of years, that we, um...
Ken Piazza, you...
He was on the building committee. It was a building committee.
He came on that. They, they appointed him to the highway building committee, one of us, to assist, but make sure that everything was done right. And we did everything right through the meetings, but the follow-up hasn't been done. And it's a shame, nobody's enforcing what they actually said that. That's a problem. One thing the DEP told me, there was one thing where a private person contaminated our wells, you could sue them. But when you contaminate your own wells, we don't sue you. That's what, that's what they said to me, so...
But I'm sure Peter wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's that?
That's about it.
Good.
Thank you.
Michael, what's that? Yeah, you got a question this morning? Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question for the board. So right now, this particular piece of property, does it have any bylaw issues or nonconformity issues or, or any issues at all? Some of it's...
Right now?
Yes, as it stands right now, okay.
We don't know, we don't know, all we're looking at is the size of the lot by the plot plan that you should have right there.
Okay.
Right? You have that?
Uh, well, that was my second question. Do you have an extra property?
I only had six copies inside.
Okay.
Of course. But with that, you can get one from the selectman. Mike, you know the process. Um, no, we don't have any problems. It's four acres or how many?
It, I, when I mapped it out today, it was about six.
All right, well, we'll look at it as six acres. That answers the question, not at this time, Mike.
Oh, okay. Um, I actually have a question for Dario, if that's okay to ask?
Yeah, sure. If it's reference to this, yes.
It is, um, so, so here's my question. Is the realtor selling this piece of property is Nathan Stewart, who's a principal of Sussex here. And he had this piece of property on a flyer listed for sale downstairs in the town bulletin board that a resident had brought to my attention. So there's, so the board of selectmen was questioning why, basically, why was Nathan Stewart municipal employee advertising Mr. Fountain's lot in a municipal building on the bulletin board? And that, I guess, was addressed with the board of selectmen, saying that other realtors don't come in and put that there. So I've seen a copy of the flyer, somebody photocopied... So, I've seen a copy of the flyer, somebody photocopied it for me, and so I'd like Mr. Dario to answer that question.
Mike, that is a selectmen to question of the selectmen meeting. Mr. Nadi came in here tonight to discuss one, the board's feeling on the property to take a look at it. That, that question right there would be a Tuesday night at 7:00, okay?
Okay.
To go back that way. Thank you. Go ahead. Do you have anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you got a question in reference to what we're talking about here tonight, go ahead.
I guess I'm all set for now. I do have some questions. Well, I guess I do have something to say. I'm a little confused, and it's nothing bad with the board, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Mike, Mike, stand by.
Yes.
Is it reference to this property right now?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Michael?
Yes, correct. It's, it's okay. I, I attended a CAC meeting, and I was actually the one that invited Todd Smola to show up. And Todd Smola was actually there and Jim Fountain was president, was president. And there ended up being discussion, discussion about this piece of property. And one of the things that I was a little unclear on that Jim Fountain didn't clarify is he had made a comment in advance to us, and this was probably two, two months ago, month and a half ago, that he was interested in the town purchasing his piece of property to put a police and fire station on, and we said, okay. And then a question was asked in front of me, and I was, the secretary was not there, and I actually was the secretary for the night, and I took the notes. And the question was asked, is if the town could not afford to put a public safety complex there, could it be possible, and this question was addressed, addressed to Todd Smola, was could Jim Fountain build his own private fire, police and fire station with his own funds and then in turn rent it on a monthly basis to the town for $25,000 a month? And Todd Smola says, no, you cannot legally do that, where if the town can't afford it, you can't privately build something and rent it to the town. And that was a little disturbing to the 15 of us that were there, so we approached Jim Fountain and said, what is so special about your piece of property? And he made a comment saying that he wanted to sell it and was looking to get as much money for it as we could. And so, a bunch of us actually had mentioned a comment that Peter had said, saying, well, the town owns other properties in town. Why don't you search those? Why was it that the selectmen were homing in on Jim Fountain's property? And Jim Fountain refused to answer the question in front of the 15 of us. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, no, that's noted, that the comment was made, yet we would have no reference to that, and it's hearsay. You're bringing it to our attention this evening.
Correct. And I, yeah, sounds like that.
That it's noted, which is fine, yet that's between a private landowner and a town government, town, yeah, a town government. So, they can talk whatever they want at any meeting and comments can be made here and there. Mr. Smola shows interest. He's done well, you know, in the position he holds, representing people, the majority and everything else. So, comments can be made and thrown out. You were present, you, you've made the notes, yet it has no effect on what goes on because here.
Right, no, I understand.
That group of people. So, it's noted and we can make aware of it, but Jim, Mr. Fountain can make comments to anybody, Michael Burrell or me, anybody about things. You know, in the best interest, I'll speak, this is just me. Mr. Fountain tries to keep this town going. Whether or not we agree, we don't have to agree. He's a developer who lives here. He owns property. He wishes, same with Mr. Boldry, Mr. Vigil of John Bluff's Cast, and the rest of the landowners. Why not keep it in here instead of having 42 homes go up or something like that? Let's utilize it to the advantage of the town down the road 10 years from now. Let's have it set aside so we can build here, yes. So, keeping his business here, getting a bang for his buck, everybody's got to make money.
Right.
But the town is not stupid either.
Yeah, I know.
So, the people together, the taxpayers associations, that's gone, but the, the associations, the people who are getting out, everybody's going to talk about this at Billy's, at Leon's, and someplace else, the breakfast place in West Warren, and it's going to go to the floor and all comments will come out. So, you know, with that, thanks for that one, but, you know, we're aware of it.
Yeah. And the only other last thing I would have to say, which is very simple, is, is I had even had a conversation with, with Becky at one time of a proposal that I was checking into, which was purchasing a piece of property up on Coy Hill Road and creating a regional fire and police dispatch center too. But that was something that was, that was my project we were working on, that's a grant money thing that didn't come through, so that's why your board had never heard about that. But that would have been a similar situation. That's why I have, you know, that's why I'm kind of, you know, interested in learning about this because, because that would have been something too, and it would have been paid for grant money as well, but it would have been, but the issue with Coy Hill is, is with, with a radio system and a police department up on top of a hill, we'd be able to communicate with all the surrounding radio systems versus building, you know, a public safety complex or police or fire down in a hole where it can't talk to the neighboring town because there's hills in the way. So, that was just to give an example, and that's my, my input too, is if you are going whatever piece of property you're looking at, you want to make sure, is it, is it logistically correct? And just, even though I don't live here, but I have researched, and there have been floods in the center of town, which there have been issues with buildings being destroyed, which the police and fire station are near there. So, that's the other thing too, is you don't want to put your money where if there's some magical flood and the police or fire station get damaged. Like you said, you want it somewhere where it's not in the flood plain and it's safe, so...
Yet, I'm sure, again, we ain't, we're not building it.
Yes.
Whoever's going to do it and look into it is going to figure out all those figures and, and with the knowledge that you have about radios and stuff, as time comes up, you'll be able to voice it whether, and it'll be noted. So, with that...
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Anything, any other comments? Got right direction?
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, we'll move on with that. Thanks. We're going to keep these photos and anything else. Peter, you be the liaison.
I still have three files in the cabinet set hold.
Yeah, I'll tell you all about that. All right, let's move on here. Got to get this back in.
In your, the other section of your finders, the medical marijuana survey, drought, survey monkey that Bill did.
Melissa, you weren't here the last time. All right, with that, it came down, it came down to the point where, medical marijuana, what are we going to do? All right, we've had our brains beat up and beat out. So, we decided as a group, and I think you might have been for one third, shoot it back, that we asked Bill to come up with a survey. We're going to get it out to the townspeople and see what they have to say about. This should, this should be right here. You should have it. If we agree on it tonight, we'll get it printed up and we'll get it out. And that way, the townspeople are going to know.
I have a question.
Well, go ahead.
The state, I don't know...
I didn't inhale soon. Oh, I thought that was...
No, no, no. The medical marijuana facilities, isn't it true that if the state wants to put it in the town anywhere, the state has the right to do it? The only reason we wanted a bylaw was to have it, say, secure it rights or someplace like that where it was able to, more whatever. Somebody comes in, wants to put it in T-Bos.
It, the, Bill explained to us last, our last meeting that, which I understood to be that way, you need to have an established bylaw before, to be compliant with the state regulations.
Yeah, that's how I...
And, and that's how, without the bylaw, you cannot have a facility in your town because the state, the state will allow it.
The state is leaving it up to the towns to create a bylaw.
It's backfired on all those...
That's absolutely...
Exactly. We were, we were, in plain English, we were hussies asses because we were asking for bylaw. Yet, had we had the bylaw and at least...
That puts you in contention.
Right.
Correct.
And then that would open the door. That bylaw, again, everybody was yelling, that bylaw would have given us the opportunity to get one. And then the state would have brought it in and say, hey, here's where, here, you've got it, it's going here.
It's wanted.
Now, how do you get that across to the people?
This is, I'm sorry, this is why it's important to have informational meetings prior to town meetings.
We had those. We had a lot of them.
I think coming out of our office, it's got to be pushed more. We've got to talk about it more. It tends to be just, I think what that is crazy right now. What are you doing? I wish you're not, no, no, no. No, it's important. You know, whatever we have for a showing tomorrow night, will determine what, and it is a special, it's not an annual, but you're hoping to get a turnout. I'd love to see the turnout exceed 40 people and we have to move downstairs. That'd be great. You know, our last, our fall special had a huge turnout, you know, and there's a lot of faces I didn't recognize. People like, look at that. I sat there with Nancy saying, wow, these are some people coming out, and it's not just school department people. It was student people with an interest, and you hope that they stay interested.
That was because you had playgrounds in there.
They stayed. That's what they stayed at the playground.
That's what got in there.
I know.
Yeah, that's what got in there.
It was hard with that zoning bylaw because there weren't, there were no clear guidelines from the state at that time when we were doing it to even, you know, counter on the questions.
And again, Bill looked around and found a few of the towns that did have them and were accepted. So, we prepared what we thought was going to be pretty cut and dry based on other towns, and it just went out, out, out the door. Yet, anything that's going to be presented to anybody within the town comes down to, as we know, public hearings, all keeping it simple and being to the point and not, and looking at everybody at the floor and not looking over their head and going that way, because everybody wants to see if you know what you're talking about, have all the answers you can have for them and prepare for the unknown. And we've been trying to do that, and it's worked out well, and sometimes it doesn't, which is fine. And you don't win all the wars, you win a bunch of the battles, maybe a war. And when it comes down to it, we decided to go with, we go, and you were here also, Derek, to go with this survey, because it's only going to help the town. If you get two thirds or a third of rights, the hydrophonic marijuana growing and people employed, and it's being regulated the way it is, and it's going to be more regulated to the point where the sales and stuff and usage, it's going to, it'll work for this town, and it will. And there's no problem with it. Today's society has to accept it. Let's get something in here, but don't be blind and say no because we're regulating it.
The opiates, they're killing everybody not to leave.
Yeah.
The thing is, you can talk to them, but it's true. It's, um, up in Portland, Maine, they have facilities, they don't have any problems. So, if you thought about talking to someone like that, bringing someone in from out of state that's had, because Portland's had one for, I think they've had it for years.
That'd be the best route to travel, bring them out to us.
Probably. Well, if you're going to have meetings and you say that you're going to have a spokesman from a facility to explain how they're regulated and how it's not a bunch of gross...
You have to look at their regulations versus ours.
Oh, yeah, but I mean...
The state doesn't even have their act together on it yet.
No.
The state doesn't know, but Maine's been doing it for years.
Do you have a copy of the survey?
I know, I know.
All right, we'll make sure you guys get copies.
Okay.
And you can sit down and look at them and, and, well, pass them out to people who come in, because we want them back. It's right there. All right, go.
We're just going to put it up on the website.
Huh?
We're going to put it up on the website.
All right, but let me step back one. Everybody take a look at the survey right now. I rolled mine in.
I was just saying, it's a whole of paper too.
I almost feel like we have to do a little bit of education though, because the reason people didn't want the bylaw was that they thought we were going to scare them away. We have to get it known out there. In order to attract them, we need to have the bylaw.
Okay, so...
Also, you've got a generation, you've got...
And we're talking about a growing facility. We're not talking about home facilities. We're talking about a production.
Agricultural.
Right.
What I can hear.
With this, Melissa, are you asking that after looking at that survey? Do you want to add that on there as a informational thing?
Yeah, I think people are going to understand that we're not going to risk so much and...
So, we put that up on top, okay? Everybody agree with that?
No.
All right, just to let you know, italicized quotation marks on the line and link in red lights, that this is the reason we need it or we have to have it, okay? All right, now, taking a look at the survey, the questions there. What do you think? Take two minutes, look down through, cut and dry and simple, yep, I thought they were.
See, I think the big thing is people are going to think it's going to be an increase in crime, or it's pretty secure, and they've got to understand that it's...
You know what I experienced? Sorry, the mentality, mentality is, is whenever you mention that, that people are going to be standing out there smoking the weed outside, right?
No, that's in Amsterdam.
Well, I know, that was the thought process.
Exactly.
Well, you know, when it came down to, when it came down to the discussions, you know, the apartments on North Street, why don't we just let them grow up there? They say they're out there and smoke.
They're not ready.
Well, those places will be almost, they'll be out of business because it's legal now and there's ways that people can get it medically and everything else. So, you're going to be putting the hardcore dime bags drive up out of business.
Well, there's a push to make it legal anyways right now. There's a push to make it legal in the next few, two years.
It's probably going to happen. It's very, very close.
Yeah.
Why don't we be ahead of them? Why don't we be ahead of them?
Like I said, it's the opiates.
Do we agree with the questions?
Yeah.
Other than add some information.
Just an informational why, right?
Speaking of Melissa's, the number, question number two kinda goes should we want zoning permit medical marijuana treatment facilities? That sounds like.
We can say no.
We're regulating them and you don't, you know, if we say something like that, we almost don't need that question because, you know, we're already telling them in order to attract the facilities.
We have to have the zoning.
Yet, yet the more information if we put it on top, they can't say we didn't throw it in. Some could say like misread it or didn't understand.
I agree with the thing on top, but then question two kinda seems irrelevant, that should we be permitting them because it's kinda moot at that point, right?
Well, in this town, I don't know.
So people might be hesitant against it regardless.
Exactly. Two-thirds of the people will say no. They can understand what's up top and they can say, no, we just don't want it. So let's leave it. I, oh, excuse me, I say leave it, you guys figure it out. Do you wanna leave it in or not? Ed's got a good point. Leave it in or not, please?
We're just in feedback, that's all we're doing, so.
I think the more information, the better.
Okay. So.
Yeah.
All right. Soon you cross that kiddery line and you can pick up. But, Beck, can you do that? Okay, good. So is it a consensus right here now that we all agree with the survey that Bill's drawn up? Drawn up, we wanna get it out as soon as possible? Motion?
Yeah, we'll add some stuff.
Yeah, add what we just did. We agree, yes? Okay, is there a motion to accept the survey presented by Bill Scanlon, reference to medical marijuana to get it out to the townspeople as written with the added little blurb of the information? Go ahead.
I make a motion that we accept the medical marijuana survey with more information on the top.
Very good. Most made?
Second.
Second. Ed? We're not overruled here, we just figured that the board that says that it's a good point, Melissa's point is there. Anybody wanna have any input here on the board? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Okay, we'll do that. Get it up to the selectmen and they can wave it and we can do that there. Beck, where you wanna go now?
Um, Bill left these on my desk, he just wants you guys to take a look at them, we'll discuss it at an upcoming meeting about the village lot sizes.
Okay, Melissa, did you get a copy of this last week? For lot sizes, for those in reference here this evening.
I mailed, yeah.
Right now, we had Bill Scanlon and I think he did a pretty damn good job overall. Looking at the village districts and non-conforming lots, we wanna change the, we wanna change the bylaw reference to village and open it up. And then open it up by having our small lots, our non-conforming lots being able to be built in. Or a person who wishes, who is there who wishes to add a, a sunroom or a deck or extend their house out, build their kitchen out, today we'll be able to do so. So five years from now, eight years from now, when time comes they wanna sell, they'll be able to sell a home that now is a little bigger, yet not protruding into the neighbor's yard. We've been battling this for years and we have copies right here that we've been looking at. And it's a ledger right here, it shows every area in town where we wish the lot sizes are specifically the village in this one that we're discussing. We wanna make it available for even people who wish to come into town. Who would like the bill to have that house, but they wanna put something on there, we'll be able to do so. So we'll look at it, this is the new copy that Bill has that we set up. We'll take it with us and we'll have the discussion, when do we wish to have Bill come back in so we can discuss it, Beck? Not next Wednesday. That's too soon, right kids? All right. Why don't we go to the meeting after next week, which will be? Twenty-fifth, is that enough time for everybody to swallow this? And we wanna get it on the floor, folks.
Bill and I, we had penciled in a date for March eleventh for an informational meeting.
On this?
Right.
So why don't, do it on the twenty-fifth and have an informational meeting on the eleventh.
And then hold our hearings on April twenty-second.
Is that okay? Pete?
Yep.
Okay, you sure?
Yep.
All right, good. Hang on to this, redo it and we'll get the information going. Why don't we have Bill come in for? Folks, why don't we ask Bill to come in on the twenty, Peter, Melissa, Bill come in on the twenty-fifth for about an hour. No more, just to discuss this and get it in so we can have the informational meeting on the eleventh, okay? Thanks. Moving on, Becky, what do you got?
Minutes.
Minutes. Folks, it's just routine, we're gonna be doing minutes and payroll for the rest of the evening. Minutes on the seventeenth, please, December seventeenth. Geez, I see no one's bid on the BFR with Lees Act, huh?
On the what?
A BFR in front of Lees Acts for sale? On Craigslist?
Oh.
Everybody going Craigslist?
No.
A brother in Illinois calls me, he says, go on Craigslist. I said, well, wait a minute, here's who go on Craigslist. BFR for sale, warrant.
The rock?
Yeah. Big, and rock. Out in front of these acts, with the hole in front of it?
Our store, our store is still there. It's on Craigslist.
That monster by the.
That BFR is for sale.
I just thought he was showing us.
No, he's in Illinois. The guy's got.
Why would you dug a hole and just bury the damn thing?
That's funny.
You know, I, I figured John would have one of the guys out there with the chisel trying to make little rocks out of it or something, but I guess.
A house cover on it?
I don't know, no, it's still for sale, the cone's in front of it. I was kinda, what are you talking about? So, went downtown and there it is, on Craigslist.
I have a rock that's bigger than that in my backyard, but it's flush with the ground, a couple of feet off.
Could be, it might be.
It goes from here to her desk and it's probably about six feet, seven feet across.
But that.
They could build a pond on it.
That rock had to roll in here with the glaciers because that, when you figured the river was here, everything was this way. That rock did some serious moving down the road, it's got history someplace.
Came from Great Lakes.
I guess, Peter. All right, let's go to the seventeenth, sorry to interrupt. Seventeenth meeting, is that where everybody is? Yeah. All right. All set on the seventeenth, folks? Take your time.
Thought that meeting with the guy from D E P was interesting.
Peter, I would've loved to have stayed, I had to cut out. I mean, he would've, I don't know how late he stayed, but there was a lot of good information.
Not, not long after you left.
The only part my head.
That was sick.
Yeah.
We want you anyway.
He, he went after Jeff something big time and I thought, I thought he was wrong and I was gonna, I kinda got in a little with it. But I thought, you know, Weston, Worcester, whatever the hell he was saying.
Where in Worcester County?
That, that's just the whole thing.
Yeah.
And Jeff has always, Jeff stated that he refers back to the book and everything else. And he was just nailing Jeff left and right, it was pretty annoying.
He was just trying to tell him that they have their own set of rules in Worcester County.
After you left, he softened up a bit and we had a good conversation.
Because Jeff was, Jeff stood by it and Jeff knows, I think Jeff knows a lot more. Mailin or whatever, Maine.
We have a list and it's our own set of rules.
That's right. All right, how about the seventeenth? All set?
I made the motion?
Yeah.
That we accept the minutes of December seventeenth to thousand fourteen.
Motion made second?
Second.
Any conversation needed? Anybody understand? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, fourteenth, please, let's go to the fourteenth.
I haven't received any official information yet. As soon as I do get it, I will pass it on. They, they reassured, should've given it to me an email, we were talking about last night.
Motion on the fourteenth minutes. Everybody read and understood, correct? Here we go. Motion made?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January fourteenth as written.
As written. Second, all in favor?
All right.
That's very good. All right, let's move on to the payroll for Becky Assara. In the amount of one three seven forty-six, two zero eight zero four and two eleven seventy-six. Is there a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept Becky's payroll as written.
Yes.
All three.
All three, very good, thank you. Any questions? Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Becky, why don't you discuss ten with us if you can while we're signing the payroll motion, stupid Warren Action Committee, we gotta zone.
Yeah, Louise Mendel dropped off a, a letter for the planning board in the box. They're looking, the committee has, well, they wanted to know if the planning board has ever considered a zoning change that would allow commercial zoning along Route sixty-seven. We've talked about that before in the past. I talked to Jim Fountain today briefly on the phone about this. So they're willing to come in and, and talk to us and see if we can, you know, work together towards something. I don't, I, I think that's a, a huge undertaking for, for Maine.
Isn't that already, there's no commercial, I mean, you got a.
We don't have a commercial for it. Part of it.
Part of it, there was one, I thought there was one area was by, by Ben Lino's you're talking about?
We don't have, well, right, right, but we don't have currently, we don't have any commercial. There's no commercial.
Oh, it was his own for business, that's.
Is there, is there intent?
Depending on what the use was.
Is there intent to have this for Maine?
I don't think so, I mean, like I said, I think that's a huge undertaking. There's not a lot of property along, I don't think, along sixty-seven that's usable, but.
Yeah.
Well, towards West Brookfield and then you would have to consider, you know, the ramifications on how deep off of sixty-seven it would go and would it be the entire length or would it be?
A lot of the property out there is privately owned. All right, you got Fountain on one side of the road. Actually, Lino's now belongs to Dave Callahan.
That's West Brookfield, isn't it?
No.
No, that's still one.
Callahan owns that and then you've got the little road that shoots up to the.
Against rural, right, and so, I mean, rural does restrict.
Yeah, so, you know.
I, I think it's a good idea.
If it's a consensus, we all agree it's a good idea. We would not mind sitting down and listen for, to their input. Yet, at this time, I think it's almost, I don't think we have the time to do it because.
Oh, no, I think it's too late for Maine, but I think it's, if we don't.
I thought it was a good idea a few years ago.
To discussions, I mean, I think that's something certainly feasible with the special.
After the town meeting and stuff, after the town meeting and stuff to get ready for, you know, next May or maybe the fall, depending on what. Tell them, sure, there's no problem with that, that'd be great. We can do that, I'll answer that, now.
So I'll contact Louise then.
Yeah, and just, just put it that way, if the board agrees, that'd be wonderful, we'll sit down and talk to them. You can serve cannolis and ziti.
I talked to Louise a lot, but we never talked about.
Business.
What they're doing, I never do, I never, I really.
There's places for everything, Peter, which is fine. All right, now, we got one of Bill's invoice here. Does that come up? Ed, you wanna review it, do you have any questions as opposed by? We will sign it after everybody has had an opportunity to review it, please.
My question was back to that, that letter from the, for the old Boston Post Road Bridge. Which I'm assuming is the one over in Malpog Brook?
Malpog, yeah.
Did anyone direct Bill to look at that or what, what was their problem with that? He just went ahead and looked at that?
As a project down the road or just something, we don't know. Okay.
Melissa brought it up to you, was how he go there. I don't know if he ended up receiving correspondence, I, I don't know. I know the selectman got a, a letter from, from DOT and, and Leaf Highway and that's why the, the memo was directed to planning. We didn't get one though.
No. Left out on the loop.
Yeah.
The selectmen gave it to us, now we're in the.
No, but we didn't get a letter from DOT on that, so I don't know if Phil did or if it's standard protocol that they send them up to town later, I don't know.
You, that bridge coming in a warm, like warm pumps, you look the side of that underneath, the whole side of it's coming down. That's gonna be a big fix when they go to fix that.
Not as bad as ninety-one in Springfield.
No, not like that, no.
When, it's on the January twenty-ninth, one twenty-one fifteen. Take a look at that and that'll explain it, that's something that we, and Peter and Melissa, you still at that meeting with Bill, yes?
We can reschedule.
It's got, you've got folks.
I hear the incoming.
He's gonna be here the.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-third.
Twenty-fifth. You can probably do it prior to the meeting.
Two thirty.
Monkey?
That's the marijuana.
I call.
Survey monkey.
Come on.
What does it, is it a counter, tells you how many people, cook it?
Could do charts and anything.
A lot of places are using. You see it a lot, municipalities. Probably.
Followed up with the owner of Hardwood, didn't Percy just call and say, I wanna be on it?
Or he wanted to rezone his property, he wanted to be part of the zone.
Yeah, I know, but Bill said that he did something with him and all, Percy wanted.
We asked him to get back to him, we'd tell him that if he would.
Yeah, asked him to get back to him, but that was it. Give a call and say, yeah, we'll do it.
What's going on, it'd be great.
I should have a draft for on Wednesday.
Nothing's on that.
No.
No, no.
They had some conservation issues, I thought there was still enough to be here.
They're closed, no, they're closing here.
They closed, so they're all doing it, yeah. It was, it's all, I think the last I knew, that was Alan Bola.
Yeah.
So he has been working on this habitation location project? And so he tied it two together? What's it say, I don't remember.
If you feel there are questions, or there are questions from board members, we will.
Review the proposed project from S D O T to demolish the structurally deficient bridge crossing Malpog? That, that's Ben Lino's, no.
That's Ben Lino's, it's.
That's the one we're talking about.
Isn't around the little road that kinda goes out.
When you take the left down to Lino's on the left to turn around, a, a right going out of town, there's a great little brook right there, there's a dam at Lino's.
Yeah.
Which needs to be reconstructed and that brook just runs right underneath into the, into the pond.
Sixty-seven, it wasn't.
Yeah, that was sixty-seven.
Technically, yeah, I thought, it used to be the.
This is the place that, Lees Act?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it's a crappy little bridge on what used to be Route sixty-seven.
That used to be where.
I believe it was.
Okay.
That's Callahan's property now.
That's right, they bought it from.
Yeah. So why would we have to have anything to do with demolition of a bridge if it's Callahan's property?
I'm not, this is Mastiote, it's a state stolen.
Don't they do the bridges?
Yeah, the property bridge handles it.
Is that still town property in front of you?
Is it still town property?
Sure.
Yeah, I would say one, the otherwise one, right.
I make a motion that we accept the bill for December thirteen hundred, January sixteen, the fifteen hundred, and give it back.
All right, with that, is there any questions that the board would like Peter and Melissa to ask Bill? Reference his payroll or reference?
I wanna ask about the Burton project, what was it, why did he go?
Well, I'll tell you right now, I talked to him the other day on the phone, it's real easy to talk to him on the phone. If you need his phone number.
No, I thought.
It's not a, I mean, to meet with him, we could get, get it out of him.
All right, with that, if you have any questions, make sure Melissa and Peter have them before the, the meeting of the twenty-fifth, okay? Other than that, is there a motion to accept the payroll for Bill?
She made that motion.
Motion made second.
Second.
Any discussion needed, any, anybody not understand? I want that answered, Melissa, but we still have to pay the payroll.
Right.
So everybody, motion made second, get it all in favor?
Aye.
To sign it. All right, let's get it done. With that, Becky, any other business?
No, I don't, I don't have any. Next meeting is next Wednesday. We have the hearing for Mark Andrews for fifty South Bridge Road. Kurt Mailin's coming in with Concon to discuss the Houstonic Solone, look in the plans.
Oh, that, that, the question?
Dr. G P said it's not common to have those mistakes happen.
Yeah. All right, we all set soon, it could be gone here, try, everybody?
No, he wasn't surprised at all about that.
We were like floored, he was like, yeah.
Yeah, great. All righty, with that, hearing no other information from anybody? And we covered everything, thank you.
So our meeting is what, the eleventh, which is next, so you only have one, excuse me, twenty-fifth of August. Mark eleventh so far, informational meeting.
Yeah. Is there?
Then we're plugging in April twenty-second as the talking here.
Is there a motion to?
They made a motion, Major.
Was made second. It'll be in the back. It's made second, all in favor?
All right.
Very good.